Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the May 26, 2022 Monthly Meeting of the Henrico County School Board. You might notice that we have a familiar yet different face to my left. Dr. Cashwell is going to be joining us virtually this evening out of an abundance of caution. And Dr. Tiggen, her designee, is sitting up on the dais with us to be here in person. Colleagues, you have had the chance to review the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Atkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda is approved.
And tonight, we are fortunate to have the students from Shady Grove Elementary Schools' Primetime RVA team part of a specially designed competition to empower 4th and 5th graders to be go-getters, decision-makers, creators, self-starters, and dreamers to lead our Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Girdy, the principal, is here and will come to the podium and introduce the students who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, and thank you for having us today. As a part of the Primetime RVA experience, these students do some training in soft skills, and one of the activities they learned how to do was to work the room. So, they are going to introduce themselves tonight.
And at this time, we will have a moment of silence, which may be used by those in attendance for personal reflection, prayer, or meditation. Thank you. You may be seated. And as we make our way down, the music students from Davis Elementary School, under the direction of Lindsay Tupper, will perform. And Mr. Mosley, our Specialist for Performant Education, is here to introduce our students. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues, and guests. As Dr. Tiggen stated, my name is Christopher Mosley, the Education Specialist for Performing Arts. Thank you. It is my pleasure to introduce, for our performance highlight this evening, the Jackson Davis Elementary School 5th Grade Dolphins, under the direction of Ms. Lindsay Tupper. Ms. Tupper is in her 23rd year as an educator and her 10th year at Jackson Davis. She wanted to share that tonight their music is about the importance of both internal and global peace, and the value of having people in your life that you can count on. She also wanted to thank the leaders and their amazing PTA for support of music in their schools. The students will perform two selections, "This Day of Peace" by Teresa Jennings and[270.72][270.72]"Count on Me" by Bruno Mars, Philip Lawrence, and Ari Levine. Tonight, we have in attendance their proud principal, Ms. Chris Bonner. We ask that you stand to be recognized at this time. All right. And now, please help me welcome to our stage the wonderful 5th Grade Dolphins from Jackson Davis Elementary School.
Thank you again to our students from Davis Elementary. It was great to hear your performance. And while I couldn't be there in person, I'm glad that I'm able to be a part of the meeting virtually. And thank you again to Dr. Tiggen for facilitating the portions that I would not have been able to facilitate virtually. The next section of the meeting brings us to our recognitions, and I'm so pleased to be recognizing our REB Award for Distinguished Leadership. At long last, we did have the opportunity to do a prize patrol recognition for this individual. But now Candace Wilkerson will kick us off for our formal recognition.
Good evening, Dr. Cashwell and school board. It is my pleasure to recognize Mrs. Tanya Holmes, Principal of Harvey Elementary. Mrs. Holmes was recently awarded the 2021-22 REB Award for Distinguished Educational Leadership. The Distinguished Leader Award recognizes principals who go above and beyond for their students and staff to create an exceptional educational environment. The award highlights management, communication skills, and the ability to inspire, encourage, and advocate for the school. Mrs. Holmes was nominated for this honor by staff members at Harvey, and the nomination was supported by current and former colleagues. One nominator stated, "I am so proud to nominate Mrs. Holmes for the REB Award, a mentor to me and a leader who is passionate and dedicated to her Harvey family. Each decision she makes is in the best interest of her staff, students, and parents. With her focus on high expectations, advocacy, partnerships with the community, and dedication as an educational leader, Mrs. Holmes creates a culture where school is a place to learn, nurture, and develop the whole child and family." Tanya received a $10,000 cash grant to be used for her own personal professional learning and an additional $20,000 for school projects, which will be used to fund Camp 3401, a planned summer career exploration camp at Harvey. Congratulations, Mrs. Holmes.
Congratulations again, Mrs. Holmes. Such a well-deserved recognition. Our next recognition is for our 2022 Teacher Scholars Program recipients. Very excited about this award, and Kenya Jackson is going to come forward for that presentation.
Good evening, Chair Shea, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, Dr. Tiggen, colleagues and guests. One of our strategic goals is to recruit, retain, and reward educators who nurture the whole child. In relation to that goal, today I would like to highlight one of our Grow Your Own initiatives, the HCPS Teacher Scholars Program. In 2015, the Teacher Scholars Program was implemented to address staffing needs and the increasing demand for highly qualified teachers in critical shortage areas such as foreign languages, mathematics, exceptional education, the sciences, and technology education. This year, we expanded the eligibility to all content areas. The program is marketed to our students through a variety of mechanisms to include the Teach for Tomorrow program in our schools, the Specialty Center for Education and Human Development at Glen Allen High School, alternative programs such as AVR, through school counselors, the social media platforms, and various other sites. To date, 14 HCPS students have been hired as division teachers with more in the pipeline. We would like to thank the American Association for Employment and Education, AAE, for awarding HCPS a mini-grant to support our Teacher Scholars Program this school year. From the Henrico graduating class of 2022, 10 high school seniors have been accepted into the Teacher Scholars Program. Upon completion of college requirements and licensure, we will welcome them back to teach the next generation of Henrico students. Addressing the retain and reward aspects of our strategic goal, these scholars will also receive a $5,000 signing bonus, which is contingent upon a three-year teaching commitment to our school division. More information will be shared during the highlights portion of this meeting. We are extremely excited to have seven of our 10 newly awarded Teacher Scholars with us tonight. As I call your name, please come up to be recognized. We have an additional three Teacher Scholars who are not with us due to prior commitments, which we will certainly acknowledge them as well. From the Three Chop District, Shelby Ford from Deep Run High School. From the Tuckahoe District, Katherine Benton from Godwin High School. Tuckahoe District, Mary Kate Mandeville from Godwin High School. Tuckahoe District, Christina Metcalf from Godwin High School. Tuckahoe District, Brooke West from Godwin High School. From the Verina District, we have Joy Jones from Highland Springs High School. Also from the Verina District, we have Arianna McMorris Scott from Verina High School. We'd also like to acknowledge Brayden Webb from the Brooklyn District, Glen Allen High School, Parker Bracy from the Tuckahoe District, Godwin High School, and Tyler Robinson from the Three Chop District, Tucker High School. Congratulations, and we're so excited to welcome you into the teaching profession. We'll certainly be keeping in touch with you, and we'll see you in four to five years for that teaching contract.
Congratulations again to our scholars, and we look forward to welcoming you back to HCPS as educators in the future. Best of luck to you. Love and excitement in the crowd. I share that feeling. All right. Our next recognition and final recognition of the evening is for our VSBA Business Honor Roll, and Mr. Macbaiton is at the podium for that recognition.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests. Each year, school divisions in Virginia have the opportunity to nominate local businesses to be added to the Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll. The Honor Roll was established to recognize companies providing invaluable support to local schools and their students. This year, Henrico County Public Schools is proud to announce three businesses that have earned this distinction. Our first business partners, and I read this, I would like to ask the following two people to come forward, Caleb Sedler, as well as Heather Greenwell. Our first business partner to be recognized is Scott Shufflebarger, who's the president of Hurtless Roofing Incorporated. Scott was unable to be with us tonight, but in his place, we have Caleb, who works for Scott, and Heather, who is the Executive Director of the Virginia Association of Roofing Professionals, and they're here to accept the award on his behalf. There's not enough time to go into all the things that Scott and VAR have provided for our students in Henrico County Public Schools, as well as Henrico County, from coming in and working with our students by presenting about careers in the roofing industry, to developing promotional videos to help explain the industry to our students that they've never seen these opportunities for, and providing hands-on training demonstrations, and most recently, happening next week, supplying materials, expertise, and volunteers to show our students how to complete a roofing job from start to finish on a real project at the West End Manor Civic Association Building for the county. So, it is with honor I recognize our first Business Honor. Our second business partner is Anton Parr USA Incorporated. Representing Anton Parr tonight with us is Dalton Eckert. Dalton, if you'd please come forward. Anton Parr has worked to create a pipeline into the high-tech STEM-related careers. This pipeline provides students the opportunity to be a part of a unique apprenticeship program that leads to not only full-time employment, but also a post-secondary degree. Anton Parr has also participated in all of the CTE signature events, including Life Ready Expo, Career Rodeo, and our CTE Letter of Intense Signing Day. I have to tell a little story about Dalton. The first time I met Dalton, he had me captured and fascinated talking about Silly Putty. And I have watched him do the exact same thing with students, using his Silly Putty to talk about viscosity and states of matter, and it's amazing what can happen when you have a person in the real world demonstrating to young people. So, please join me in welcoming Anton Parr. Our third business partner honor each night is Howells Heating and Air Condition Incorporated. I would like to ask Jean Burke to please come forward. As Jean's coming forward, let me tell you a little bit about what Howells has done for Henrico County schools. Over the years, Howells has been the one that's always there, and I love this, doing the things that make a difference in a young people's life. It could be scholarships, it could be donations of equipment, internships, employment, they're always there, willing to help build the industry. For many years, they have continued to support our program, and their dedication to the industry is obvious, but their dedication to our students is outstanding. Please join me in welcoming Howells Heating and Air to this elite list. In reality, all three of these groups continue to go above and beyond supporting Henrico County Public Schools. Thank you.
Congratulations again to all of our award recipients, our recognized for the evening. The next item is our Henrico highlight, and we got to meet our Teacher Scholar recipients just a minute ago, and this highlight, fittingly, showcases the Teacher Scholars Program. Take a look.
We are here to congratulate you because you've been selected as a Teacher Scholar for Henrico County Public Schools.
We had identified 10 seniors who were the recipients of our Teacher Scholars for the school year.
Teacher Scholars.
Oh, yes, yes. Thank you so much.
So, what that means is that after they complete all of their eligibility requirements to become a teacher, they will have a guaranteed position here in Henrico County with a $5,000 sign-on bonus. And then, these students will now have the opportunity to be our colleagues.
We are so excited you're going to be helping the students here in Henrico County and that you chose the teaching profession. We've hired 14 Teacher Scholars thus far, one of which has been a New Teacher of the Year.
And we're going to see what it looks like when it's not a purpose.
Yeah, so in 2017, when I graduated from Highland Springs, I applied to be in this program because I knew I definitely wanted to be a teacher once I graduated college. And the program has been so invaluable. It's just been amazing.
And now, what do we have remaining on the inside?
Two.
Two, very good.
I'm so excited to hear that you were selected as a Teacher Scholar for Henrico County Public Schools.
To be able to see their desire to want to come back and be a teacher was just such a rewarding opportunity.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes, absolutely.
This has been an absolute perfect pipeline to bring our students back to Henrico County to fulfill our teaching roles and to have them commit to Henrico County as a teacher.
Guess what, Mama?
Guess what?
I got the scholarship.
You did? Oh, I'm so excited.
I know.
Oh, I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
We are here to congratulate you.
Wow, that just gets me so excited to welcome our next group of educators, and congratulations to all of our Teacher Scholarship winners. Ms. Atkins, would you please read our mission statement?
Henrico County Public Schools, an innovative leader in educational excellence, will actively engage our students in diverse educational, social, and civic learning experiences that inspire and empower them to become contributing citizens.
Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is the public forum. This is a time where citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the school division. 12 citizens have signed up in advance. Speakers will be given two minutes to address the school board. We will follow the sign-up list, and the board will not hear tonight from speakers who have not signed up in advance. Those who have signed up to speak may not relinquish their spot to someone else. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name and neighborhood or school affiliation and the subject of your remarks. Any use of profanity or inappropriate language will be ruled out of order. After stating your name, please place the number you were given in the cart near the podium. Speakers are allotted two minutes to address the school board. To assist you in tracking your time, there is a timekeeping system displaying the elapsed time on the screen. Speakers will also receive a notice from the chairperson when your time has expired. The school board is here today to hear from you, the community. Speakers should speak directly to the board. We will not be responding to speakers. We appreciate your attendance here this afternoon and for providing your input. Is Speaker Number One present? Speaker Number One? Speaker Number Two?
Hello?
Hi, I'm Morgan Nash, and I teach Social Studies at Deep Run. I cannot start these comments without acknowledging how heavy this week has been. My heart hurts over the students and teachers killed in Texas. This year has been one of the hardest years teachers have ever faced. We've dealt with immense learning gaps, students with crippling anxiety, a state government that asks people to turn in teachers, and the most recent school shooting has only intensified. intensified fears for safety in our workplace. This is on top of the everyday responsibilities and challenges of this job. Despite the heaviness of this profession, I'm here because I love my job. I'm begging you to reconsider how you compensate it so I can stay in this profession. In any other career, if I was unhappy with how I was being paid, I could go interview at a different company. That's not the case in public education. We're at the whim of school boards. I chose to work in Henrico because they've historically paid teachers the highest. But when we say highest, we're talking marginally. In my opinion, if you value your employees, your goal every year should not be to try to figure out how to pay them a percentage or two more than a neighboring county. This slight salary increase seems to be the main retention strategy. I'm here to say that this strategy is seriously undervaluing your workforce. We are highly educated, incredibly adaptable, and motivated. We are the ideal employee, and the private sector has recognized that. You aren't losing teachers to other counties, you're losing teachers from education altogether. It makes me sad looking at my salary every year and wondering if this is how much society values teachers. This whole system is demoralizing. I'm here today to try to overcome this feeling that change is impossible. I want to be part of the change and work alongside this board to create a sustainable, transparent system. I want that system to pay teachers like the professionals we are. I'm not sure what you're waiting for. What amount of teachers have to leave before the system changes? School systems across the county used to look at Henrico as an example of progress and innovation. Let's regain that reputation with how we compensate our teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. Speaker number, speaker number three?
Good evening, board members. Dr. Cashwell, my name is Zara Ahmed, and I'm a junior at Deep Run High School. I want to start off my speech with a quote from the Henrico County Public Schools' strategic goals. Your third goal is to recruit, retain, and reward educators who nurture the whole child. However, it seems that we, as a school district, are straying from that goal. As the school board, you're responsible for the mental and social well-being of all students, and most importantly, all the teachers. You all required our teachers to hold mental health sessions for us this past year, but what about the teachers' mental health? When they are working multiple jobs to sustain their children in daycares, or when they're grading SOL tests without extra pay or a day off, or when their school board is not responsive to their concerns? Who's counseling our exhausted teachers? Second, social needs. Dr. Cashwell received a $38,000 pay raise last year, and in response, Cooper said, quote-unquote, "Henrico will only be able to attract the best candidates if it demonstrates and sustains a commitment to educational leadership." If a commitment to educational leadership means so many teachers at Deep Run and across HCPS are resigning in the last year and in the next, then you are doing a wonderful job. As someone whose parent is a teacher of Henrico County, I must ask, are teachers paid for their contributions fairly? Are they compensated for spending hours outside of school on grading work or tracking missing assignments rather than spending time with their daughter? Are they compensated for going to work and missing an important religious holiday and opportunity to spend more time with their family? Are they compensated for having years of experience and knowledge compensated for what they're worth? I'm in the classroom every day, and so are the hundreds of teachers and thousands of students, and it's really frustrating for me to witness the stress, anxiety, and exhaustion that you all don't see because you aren't in the classroom. I'm tired of this, and it's time for a change.
Thank you so much. Speaker number four?
Hi, I'm Patrick Miller, president of the Henrico Education Association. Dr. Cashwell, members of the school board, we stand before you as colleagues and comrades, friends, and fellow educators, and we only ask for what's fair. Fair for us, fair for each other, fair for our students, and fair for Henrico. You are hemorrhaging qualified, experienced educators with a salary scale that's confusing, convoluted, and corresponds not to years of experience, but the whims of mercurial municipal boards and leadership. We ask for the support for our veteran teachers and support for prospective teachers. What good is a high starting salary when leadership decides for you when you do or don't move up a step and burn you out before you see any real advancement? Professional development is offered to raise your pay grade usually between 4% and 5%, but when working conditions are so abysmal, it hardly seems worth the years of unpaid overtime just to advance one rung in this ladder, especially when there's no guarantee that another district will recognize these credentials should you seek better working conditions elsewhere. It's the professional equivalent of a mine owner paying miners in company money, only accepted at the company store. We ask for support of part-time employees and a bonus equal to that for returning full-time educators. Our voices cannot go unheard if we are going to work together to make Henrico a district that recruits and retains the best educators.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Speaker number five?
Good evening. My name is Matthew Wilson. I have been a physics teacher and robotics coach at Deep Run High School for 11 years. I have 18 years of teaching experience, and speaking with you tonight to share my concerns about the compression and lack of transparency of teacher pay. I'm excited that we are increasing the pay for new hires. It's absolutely right, but you can't forget about the teachers that have experience, those who act as mentors to newer teachers and have the skills that only be learned when leading a classroom. I went making $8,000 more than the new grad hired this year. Why is 18 years of experience value at 3/4 of a percent increase per year? That doesn't even cover the traditional cost of inflation. In class, I tried to teach my students how to interpret trends over time. The only interpretation that I can come up with with this current pay scale is that Henrico County does not value classroom experience. I struggle to understand why a teacher with half my experience makes more than I do, or coworkers with 25 years of experience have a pay rate that I can never achieve in your current step systems, or even what a step really is. The current step system makes me feel undervalued. I have heard the school board is heartbroken that I feel that I don't value them. I am also heartbroken. I now have nagging thoughts that my choice of teaching, the job that I love, is selfish and not the right financial decision for my four kids. Finally, I want to touch on pay equity. Recently, we have reports that certain, certain, certain office staff, certain central office staff received a 17% raise. You have a hard and demanding job, and you deserve it. Just, I just want you to understand that this final point, that that one raise you made in one year, it would take a new teacher more than 18 years to get that exact same raise. Teachers just want to be valued and compensated at that same level you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Speaker number six?
Hi, I'm Megan Hyatt. I'm a teacher at Gaten Elementary. Speaking about teacher pay, I've been a teacher for 11 years. Nine of those have been in Henrico. I'm a product of Henrico. I grew up in Verona, I graduated from Verona High School, my mom was an art teacher in Henrico for 27 years. I believe in this county. I've taught elsewhere, and I've come back. I want to be here. However, the lack of reasonable compensation and transparency in pay are huge problems for me. When I got my first teaching job, I excitedly showed my mom my new contract. At the time, she had been teaching in Henrico for about 22 years, had a master's, and was national board certified. I remember how disappointed she was that I, a brand-new teacher with a bachelor's, was only making a couple thousand dollars less than her. Then I got my master's and was bumped up even more, while she remained the same. As a veteran HCPS teacher, that had to make her feel undervalued. There are still massive inequities in pay across the county. The HCPS SAFE Group recently did a survey of teachers and support staff pay. Right now, at year 11, I am making $55,287.25 per year. Using this survey, let's compare. A colleague with identical experience and degree is only making around $53,000. The only difference? They didn't have a two-year gap in working for HCPS. They've dedicated their whole career to Henrico, and they are making less than me? Or a teacher with 14 years of experience, all in Henrico, making the same as me? How? I've even talked about the pay for, I haven't even talked about the pay for support staff and IAs who are most definitely underpaid and underappreciated. I've been through five this year alone. Until recently, the current pay scale was not even available on the HCPS website. We need clarity, transparency, and equitable compensation for all HCPS employees. I urge the board to conduct an overhaul of the pay system and include staff in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hyatt.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Broda. I'm a history teacher, department chair, I have a master's, I'm nationally board certified, I'm at Henrico High School. Reverend Cooper, I wanted to briefly thank you for hosting my student Cheyenne at Student Government Day. I paired the two of you together on purpose, I know it was going to be a good fit, she had a great time, so thank you so much for that. I'm wearing my school colors tonight. The reason I'm doing that is I came straight from a vigil for our student Diamond Brown Mosby, who was shot and killed last week. The shirt reads "Stronger Together." The sentiment holds true for our school, but even more for our county. I'm here tonight to talk about pay transparency for teachers and all certified staff in HCPS. The step schedule, which was just recently made public and easily accessible a short time ago, is poorly constructed and endlessly frustrating. We heard tonight and continue to read about countless programs to recruit new teachers, and I'm so glad that we're actively recruiting excellent individuals to teaching. But experienced teachers are being left behind. The salary scale goes up to step 32, this is a facade and a farce, and truthfully, will never be realized by 95% of your current teaching staff. We're stuck in mid-range steps that have no connection to our years of service. Many teachers don't know why they're on the step they are. Please align steps with years of service. Make salary predictable year to year. Don't make teachers guess what they might be paid. Please reevaluate the steps, support the work we do year after year, because we've earned it.
Thank you. Speaker number eight? Is speaker number eight present?
Hello, is a point of order? May I have three minutes in accordance with policy?
All speakers will receive two minutes. Can we start the timer back over, please? Thank you.
Okay, so I'm not here to talk about teacher pay transparency, but very supportive. Pay for performance. So thanks for your policy considerations today. I want to caution you that writing policy to align with what we do is not the role of an elected board, but rather, policy should reflect what we should do, with some consideration of what we can do. But tonight, I'm here to implore you to outlaw all surveying of students in schools. So while PPRA attempts to provide protection for students from surveys that could potentially harm them by exposing their identities or personal information, or exposing them to suggestive material they might not otherwise have been exposed to, for example, their sexuality, or the types and frequency of sex they have and with whom, the intent is not being achieved. Survey notifications are hidden in the bottom of long and poorly formatted emails, questions are missing, opt-out information is difficult to find. Students are still provided with surveys they've opted out of. Recently, a survey was issued at Freeman High School, no notification was given to parents ahead of time. Similarly, AP class surveys have been issued that fit the PPRA guidelines, but parents are not notified. I've contacted the college board, who says that they do not have AP surveys, hence those are being created by schools or teachers with, I presume, no content oversight. I've also been in contact with PPRA administration, confirmed we're allowed to proactively opt-out children from all surveys, yet many of us have been told that they have no way to proactively opt-out students. I've offered to help create and implement processes to help the schools align to PPRA requirements, and I've had no replies to my offer. Rather than breeding transparency and parental involvement, these processes scream of secrecy and ulterior motive. I don't see where the questions on these surveys are incrementally benefiting our students more than they're potentially hurting them. And if not for the benefit of improvement, then they must be being used for research. And I, for one, do not appreciate having to worry if my children are being used as research subjects when I've sent them to school to learn as required by law. So I have other points surrounding procedures and safeguards that other parents seem to be concerned about, but I would just ask you to really look at those policies and outlaw the surveys.
Thank you so much. Speaker number 10? Speaker number 10, are you present? Speaker number 11? Speaker number 11?
Good evening. My name's Tenille Moore. My kids go to Elko Middle School, but I'm not here to address Elko Middle School. I'm here to directly state the fact that I'm a veteran. I have served my country for 15 long years, went into the Marine Corps right after high school, after graduating from Highland Springs in 2004. The issue that I've come to speak about is, has already been resolved, but I really came here to directly talk to Amy Cashwell. I like your salary, by the way. I hope that's working out for you. I addressed you in an email in reference to how I was treated at John Roth Middle School at my daughter's soccer game with my service dog. I was then approached by a very rude administrator that told me to leave the premises because my dog could not be on the field. Keep in mind, the match was over. Keep in mind, my dog is tagged as a service dog, but also keep in mind that she does not need to be tagged as being a service dog, okay? Read up on the ADA laws, because I told you all in an email that I seek counsel of a lawyer because my rights were violated. Amy, you decided not to acknowledge my email. You're making all that big money to not respond, or to get your assistant to respond to me with a form letter or email. How dare you? You're making over $200,000 a year, and you can't respond to my email? You shouldn't have your job. Maybe you should read up on what the laws are. Maybe that's what you should do. No one responded to me on this board in front of me. But you all expect to have parents support Henrico County Public Schools, but you don't know what the laws are. My dog goes to every event, and I will not stand for the discrimination. Remember my face and my name. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I believe speaker number one may have arrived. In the meantime, is speaker number one present?
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank Reverend Cooper and Ms. Kathy Harris for assisting me on signing in on this terrible log that you have on your website. Madam Chair and Board Members, Dr. Cashwell, my name is David Goodall, Sr., resident of Fairfield District for over 50 years. Almost 24 years ago, July 23, 1998, I spoke before the then-school board regarding charter schools. Then, the Henrico County Civic League opposed any charter schools being established in this county. Again, in 2022, after renewed efforts being raised in this state, I am still opposed to any charter school being established in the county. My reasons are as follows. The charter school concept do not address the needs of elementary, middle, and high school at-risk students. At-risk students will not be adequately served. These students are defined according to the State Board of Education criteria as students having physical, emotional, intellectual, socioeconomic, or cultural risk factors. Funds would be sipping from the regular school budget. The current Henrico County Public School system offers outstanding curriculum to its students. I'm aware that most who support charter schools oppose unionized teachers. Another issue that I would like for this board to look into include the racial makeup profile of the county's high schools, if for no other reason, it has been 68 years since Brown v. Board of Education. Madam Chairman, in a report by VCU School of Education and Penn State Center for Education and Civil Rights dated November 20, subject school segregation by a boundary line in Virginia, the report found that the school segregation by race and poverty is deepening in Virginia.
Thank you, Mr. Goodall. I'm sorry, your time has expired. If you would like to leave the remainder of your remarks for the board, we are happy to do. to read them.
Okay, do that.
You can hand them to our clerk if you would like. Thank you so much. Are there, is there anyone else who has a number who signed up? Is there anyone else who has a number who had signed up that we may have missed? Just want to make sure we didn't miss anyone who signed up. Thank you so much to our citizens that participated. That concludes our public forum. Board members, we also received some written comments that we all should have received before the meeting started. Did everyone receive such? Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent items. Board members, are, do any members request that these items, that any item in our consent agenda be separated for separate discussion or vote?
Madam Chair, I would ask that our acceptance of the Henrico Education Foundation grants be separated out, so we could have a moment of discussion if we could.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any other items that you would like to separate out? Ms. Ogburn, just for clarity, would you like to separate them out for discussion or discussion and vote?
Just discussion.
Just discussion. Okay, so hearing that, let's take up for discussion. Item 9.04, the Henrico Education Foundation Cycle II Innovative Grant Funding for 2021-2022. Ms. Ogburn, did you have any comments that you would like to add?
I do. I just wanted to recognize that the CEO of the Henrico Education Foundation is in our audience, and Mike Taylor, if you'll stand up for a much-needed and deserved round of applause. But in board docs, anyone who cares to can look at our list of Cycle II grants that have been approved for, we have eight projects that have been approved ranging from pre-K through 12th grade, and these are just a few examples of what the Henrico Education Foundation does for the school system. They're called innovative grants for a reason. This is innovative thinking. It is our teachers showing such creativity. And having been a classroom teacher, I will tell you, that's one of the reasons why classroom teachers become teachers, is so that the ability to be creative and innovative and HEFF is allowing, by their hard work, our teachers to do exactly that. And I know that I speak for all of us when I say that that's something that we love about HEFF, but it's also something we encourage our teachers to do, is be innovative thinkers and to think outside of the box. Just because somebody has done it a way in the past doesn't mean that's the way you have to do it now. And so I really like that you look at the projects that are listed up here, some of the things that our students will be able to do, it's incredible. So I just wanted to say that to our HEFF team and to the board members that serve on HEFF, and to our volunteers that go into making this all possible for our teachers. So thank you for that, Madam Chair. Just a moment of personal privilege to express a lot of appreciation for a lot of hard work.
Absolutely. Henrico Education Foundation and Mike Taylor, they do incredible work supporting our teachers and our schools and our students and our families. And so, Mike, thank you for being here and for your support of the grants. Any other comments about this agenda item? Any other consent items that you would like to discuss? All right, hearing none, it is the superintendent's recommendation that we adopt all of the items in the consent block. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the school board approve consent agenda items 9.01 through 9.12 as recommended and presented.
Thank you. Motion made by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cancela. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The meeting consent agenda items are approved. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Colleagues, do you have any unfinished business this evening? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is new business. Colleagues, do you have any new business items? Hearing none. The final item on the agenda is the announcement of meeting dates. The school board's next meeting and work session is scheduled for Thursday, June 23, 2022, at 1:00 p.m., and a monthly meeting at 6:30 p.m., right here in the New Bridge Auditorium. The meeting time may be adjusted if needed. This meeting is hereby adjourned.